They're equally important.
That's why I got creative. God, so firefighters have heroes.
Okay, I'm gonna call our October 30th special property.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Order. Tonight's meeting is to discuss the public safety budgets for police and fire. And going into that, we will start with our fire.
Here's the, here's the actual.
Does he want, oh, I emailed that. Sorry, I'll get to you sooner.
I have a paper.
Oh, I'll take paper too.
Makes it sometimes easier. Scott, do you want one?
Yes.
I gave mine to Scott.
Stop!
I could've gotten out of the meeting.
I got you hooked up. I took care of it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just because we are on TV, everyone just wants to go around the room real quick and reduce themselves.
Scott Kelly, Alderman person.
Shane Blazer, committee member.
Herman Blevins, chief of police.
Brian Ruskowski, EDP chief.
Todd Eckes, deputy fire chief.
Tim DeSorci, finance.
Steve Gold, Alderman person. Okay, go ahead, Todd.
Um, I don't know where you'd like me to start. You looked at the, at the budget already. Salaries and wages, we really don't have a whole lot.
Which ones? Well, fifty-two, two-oh-one is fire. Sixty-two, six-oh-three is EMS.
Thank you.
Salary and wages, we really don't have a lot of control over. I think that's sick leave, same thing. Overtime, overtime this year was exorbitant. We understand that. We had a lot of people leaving. A lot of people, new people that came in. So Scott took the, what I understand is Scott took the average of it and understood that this was a little unusual year. I believe that he bumped the overtime up for next year. Am I right or wrong on that, Tim? Just like it bumped it up.
Yeah, slightly. So I think he did leave a voicemail saying he may have made a, he may be eight thousand short on his overtime. He kinda, a formula was wrong.
Right.
So I gotta talk to him about that. So that might be a change.
Question for you first, Tim. We don't have anything that has comparison current.
Expenses, no. Unfortunately, the Venus budget report doesn't put.
I like those a lot, because then you can compare.
Yeah, and that's something, that's something we wanna work. You know, this is the first year with it. So it's something that I know if you export this into Excel, then you can kinda choose some more fields and stuff. But we gotta work on that, how we get in a presentable format. So I know this year's kinda.
It's just nice to look at, because you have different budget versus.
Like you used to have like a couple of years of history.
Yeah, like the old, yeah.
Yeah, so that's something that we want. But if you need any.
Oh, we don't see this, so we, it's just a number in the budget. We don't have any comparisons.
So, but if you ever, if you want any actual information for any particular conscious.
There is all particulars. It's just nice to visually look at.
Thank you.
So he's got in here the twenty-twenty budget. For overtime, it's the same. Basically, I think he bumped up a little bit, but it's basically the same. Lot of emergency call-ins this year. Sick leave and holiday pay are generally just about the same thing there. We have been seeing a little more sick leave. Ambulance transfer pay, I think it's, talks in here, he dropped to twelve thousand five hundred. We're seeing probably a reduction in that. It's probably from Medevac being in town. So looking at what we did this year, that's where he set that line, was from this year's average of transfer pay. Office supplies, the FICA and HSA contributions again, but nothing we can do with any of that. That's negotiated items. But office supplies, no change in the twenty-twenty budget. Postage was actually a decrease, again from last year. We used a little bit, yes, but less. Copying, we did have an increase in, in the budget. Equipment maintenance, increase of five hundred based on our two thousand nineteen spending through August. Repair and replace equipment, that's what that budget's for, both fire and EMS. Got a decrease of twenty-five hundred for building maintenance for the twenty-twenty budget. I think that was because this year they had a lot of money for roof furnaces and such. Small tools, increase based on two thousand nineteen spending. It's got an increase of two hundred and ten dollars.
And just to make a note on a lot of these operating expenditure accounts are common to both fire and EMS. Those are allocated on a straight seventy-two percent, fire twenty-eight percent EMS. So the corresponding change, I think you'll see in the EMS budget. The only ones that are a hundred percent either is if it's like ambulance supplies, obviously we'd make a hundred percent EMS. But for a lot of these operating accounts, like building maintenance, office supplies, stuff like that, and salaries and benefits, it's a seventy-two, twenty-eight split.
Dare I ask why you came up with that?
We did analysis of staffing and just kinda. Yep.
The ambulance supplies is the same amount based off our two thousand nineteen spending. That stayed pretty much the same from the prior. So that stayed the same. Telephone, I think he's got a slight increase based off of two thousand nineteen again. That could be raises in telephone procedure, telephone fees. The month for twenty-twenty for water and light is the same. Heating is a decrease based on two thousand nineteen. Heating budget went down, looks like four hundred dollars, just shy of four hundred. Internet and email, twenty-twenty is the same. Dues and subscriptions, twenty-twenty is the same. This, that dues and subscriptions is for like members of state fire chiefs and things like that. The training and education, I think he's got a.
It's a large decrease.
A large decrease, yep.
Yeah, the idea why it's.
He said something about he moved some money.
I think it was the overtime associated with training is reflected in overtime.
In overtime, yep, that's what it was.
So that's, this is probably just strictly disregistration, hotels, meals.
Right.
Makes sense.
Educational reimbursement, there's no changes for twenty-twenty. EMS grant. The adjusted budget's fourteen. I think that's, that is a hundred dollar change, if I think, percent change, I think. I don't think we, I don't think we.
That's a special grant. We get money.
FAP fundings.
FAP fundings for equipment and I think training.
Yeah.
There's two, there's two separate grants. And basically what we do is, you actually see on the Tuesday Finance Committee, it's like, we get that grant money and then we, we put it in there and then we appropriate to the expenditure. And then that carries over and then they have to report to the state once a year on use.
Gotta show them exactly what we used it on. They're pretty, pretty stringent on what you can use it on.
Yeah, and it can't supplement budget funds. That's why we don't show it as a budget item. We get the grant and then we appropriate it so that it's used for just specific items for that.
EMS software, you can see there's an increase in twenty-two hundred and thirty for two thousand nineteen. That's the software that we use for our pre-hospital care reports. That was estimated in twenty-twenty to be thirteen thousand six hundred. But we also added the cost of the Life Net, which is what we use to be able to send our twelve leads to hospitals. So when we do a twelve lead, we send it up to the hospital it's going to, so they can take a look at it. And they can scramble their cardiac surgeon and stuff like that. Our EMS building support, that's a wash. We, there's nothing changed from that, so. Our ambulance vehicles, the same amount as requested for two thousand nineteen. I believe that is just money that goes in for future. Is that correct? Tim?
The what? Ambulance, that'd be like just the standard maintenance on the vehicles, anything?
Clothing allowance, I think is like, it's just shy of the, what was there last year, so. Or a little bit of increase, I'm sorry. No increase in uniforms, first responder stipings, stipends. That's what's paid for the departments. You receive ten dollars per call. That was, I think he's got on here.
That's, yeah, it's for Saratoga. The contracts we have Saratoga and Port Edward's.
So we pay the first responder?
For them, yeah. For, that was part of the contract negotiation, that they respond to the scene. I said they get a stipend because they're assisting with the call. So, and we pay that to them all twice a year.
Laundry and dry cleaning, same. Physicals is the same as the year before. Physicals are mandated because of the hazmat team, so. And property and auto insurance, it looks like it's the same. You wanna go through the capital allay budget requests right away, or?
Sure.
So.
Those'll be a year. The document, you had the detail on those already in the first unit document you have? No, the, the unit one, that was on the link.
Scott, he's all, gives me the description, I don't know if they got that or not.
So in the email link, that one?
Yeah. Cause that includes the detail on those.
So the first one on there is the Lucas device. We're looking, we would like to purchase two of them. He's got a pretty good write-up in here, about seventeen thousand five hundred a piece. There is awesome research out there that defines survivability of patients in cardiac arrest and what this device actually does. Besides the idea, I mean, it can produce CPR constant over that whole time we have that patient. And there's no letdown or breakoff from a human that actually gets tired from doing CPR. And that's been proven that, that constant, good CPR is changing the outcomes of patients in field.
So this is something that you strap on them, or?
It's like a short backboard, and then you put the patient on there, and it looks like a big thumper. It's got a ball like this that sits right in the center of the chest. And you strap it over the top of them and you start it, and it actually comes down and it measures the depth of the chest. And then it'll, it'll give a perfect compression for as long as you got that on.
Oh.
Research has proven that these things have fantastic outcomes. The other thing this thing does is, you know, our call volume keeps going up and up and up. And once we get this strapped on, right now we send five people to cardiac arrest because we gotta keep changing guys out every two minutes to do CPR. Once we get this strapped on, we got two guys basically, they'll stay there and continue to help. But if we would get another call, they could actually be pulled away because we don't need them there for those two minutes, you know, two minutes of CPR, changing out all the time. So that's one of the reasons why we're looking at this, that these two devices would go in our two frontline ambulances. Med two and med one on both sides of the cities. Scott's got a nice write-up in here that describes it, that kinda adds what that cost would be and why we're requesting it. The next item on there are transport ventilators. This is replacements. Some of the ones we have are the ones we have is fifteen years old. We're starting to see maintenance issues and costs with them. This is what we, we got long-term. We gotta take a patient from a hospital or we, we get a return of spontaneous circulation in the field. We can put this transport ventilator on and take them to Marshfield or Aspiris. So this, this delivers the appropriate amount of liters per minute at a pressure that's designated, that, that shows good outcomes. Sometimes it's designated by a respiratory therapist, the pressure. The exact liters per minute, the exact amount of time in between each one of them is all set, again, a pair of hands free on a big, long transfer. It's something we've got in place, and this is actually to replace one of those that are greater than fifteen years old, so.
Tim, where is this in the budget?
The what?
The hallway.
Ambulance hallway?
Yeah. Oh, wait a minute, that's maybe?
Sixty-two, six-oh-three, fifty-eight, one hundred.
Do you get your budget up there? Do you have a page?
Oh, thirty-eight.
I'm just trying to find, oh, ambulance hallway. I just wanna make sure I follow along here, Tim.
And those are like two items in EMS. And then on the fire side, we'd like to have, there's, the first line here, that ten thousand five hundred is for three sets of turnout gear. Turnout gear by NFP standards, we can only have them for ten years. So we, we've got them on a cycle where we can change three to four out a year, and that's the request for those, for those three, those three sets of gear. That's that first one. The thirteen thousand five hundred for six generic sets of turnout jackets and pants. We've implemented a pretty stringent SOG when it comes to decon and rehab of firefighters now. I'm sure you guys know the likelihood of a firefighter getting cancer later on in life. And that new SOG actually has them cleaning their gear right after a fire. Or right now, we get back and if it's eight o'clock in the morning and we have a fire or ten o'clock in the morning, they've got no gear. So what's their alternative? They can leave their gear until the end of the shift to wash. So not, as they put their gear on, they're taking all those carcinogens that come off of that fire and they're breathing the rest of that shift. So what this is, is we're looking at, it's not feasible to buy a set, a second set of gear for everybody. It's just not cost. We're looking at six sets of gear, two and three different generic sizes that somebody could wash their gear when they get back, pull that gear off, and use that for, for the rest of the shift. And that's what those three are, and that's a cost of thirteen five hundred. The other one he's got on there is seventy-seven hundred for thirty-five turnout gear bags. That kinda maintains the integrity of our gear as they move from station to station, for one. Second thing is, is again, we talk about carcinogens inside the station. If a vehicle starts up inside that station, that gets on, the gear that's laying out on the floor. This would allow them to keep that gear in those bags, and that carcinogen will never get onto that gear so that when you pull it up, it grinds in their groin or wherever that lays, the rest of the fire or whatever that they're at. So that, actually, that's a pretty light cost there for keeping up some of the gear and protect that value of that cost of a gear, you know? I mean, you're looking at thirty-five hundred bucks a set of gear, and you're looking at, you know, a hundred dollars for a bay. It's a, it's a good investment, really. And that bay can be used for new gear in the future, you know, it just protects that gear, so. Next line is fifty-eight hundred for thermal imagers to be placed on truck five. We've got thermal imagers on all our engines right now. When, if truck five sits over at the station on the west side, if that truck needs to go to anything in the city, larger houses, industrial complex, the guy's gotta run to engine and grab like five or eight different items off the engine and take them over to the truck before they can even respond, because we don't have items on there. What we have in the budget, and some of this is gonna come out of what we have in our small tools budget already, but some of the stuff is gonna get put onto the truck five, so we don't gotta grab that if something's forgotten. And this is for thermal imagers for that. That would be a thermal imager for the officer, and then a thermal imager in the back, the small ones we get for like twelve hundred bucks that firefighter takes when they're going inside the building. And that's what that cost is. The next line was eighteen hundred for two cool water vests. This is for rehab. We had a couple of guys go down this, this last year. And it usually happens at the mill. You're inside that mill and you got fire inside or at, on paper machines. But the one we got the most, the one, the instance that we had the most was in the line kiln. That's already like a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty degrees up there, and had a fire right underneath that. And this would allow them to be able to come down and put that cool water vest, cool water vest on and rehab. Actually, that vest is also gonna be able to be used, you can put it under, so it may prolong your time up there before you had to come out of there, so. That's, that's what that line is. The next line is portable radio batteries and microphones. We've been holding off and holding off. Last two years, we've applied for an AFG grant for new radios. Our radios are getting to the point where they're starting to fail. This year, we've probably changed out six or eight microphones. We're talking about the microphones, the lapel mics. Our batteries are getting to a point where they should be at eighty percent. When you take them off the rack, we, we've probably got a third of them are, don't even make that eighty percent after, after they get, you know, charged and refined, so. We, I guess we waited and waited, hoping we were gonna get that AFG grant. We found out like a week or two weeks ago that we're not gonna get it for the year. We'll apply again next year, but maybe, we're looking at, is this twelve thousand, maybe it'll limp us through and tell that. If we don't, we're gonna have to look at some way we replace those radios, but that's a large cost, and we were hoping we're gonna get that AFG grant for that.
You guys appreciate the amount?
Assistance to firefighters grant. It comes through FEMA. Every year FEMA, the federal government allocates so much money. We got our cascade system years ago with that AFG grant, our compressor and the cascade system, we got through there. We've had a couple of things over the years.
Like a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
For ninety-five thousand.
Yeah.
Do you guys set yours on a cycle to replace your radios?
Yes, we do. We have a replacement cycle as well.
And you don't have a replacement cycle right now?
Well, what happened, how that got to this point from years ago, I can't talk to, I don't know. But we bought all new radios, like, it was before I got here, because I, I was just getting there, and that's fourteen years ago. So the whole place got changed out with radios, you know?
Maybe this'll jumpstart, maybe replace the cycle where you can.
And I think that's, yep, exactly.
To do that. Think it's down there.
And then the last one, it's got fire vehicles, twenty thousand. Most of the, the majority of that is through their annual inspections. There's been things identified on a few of the vehicles that were large cost items. And we chose to wait and bring that to here for the funding for it, so. It's, it's, it's part of the DOT inspection, and it's, it's a large cost item, so.
Do you guys have anything for your station upgrades in the budget, or?
I think we're waiting for that anal, that analysis to come back.
Have we have got anything back yet, or?
Well, if you remember from the last meeting, November fourteenth or thirteenth, we're gonna be meeting with five bugles to go over their thing. And then, once we have a.
Is that internal meeting you're gonna have, or is that?
Yeah, I'll set it up and stuff. And then once, I guess they'll probably present their report, their findings, their recommendations, and have their game plan analyzed, you know?
They were here a couple of weeks ago and they spent the whole day here going through both stations.
I just think that's a priority, and it, longs over on them every month till we can get something. Cause I, I feel that we, we need two locker rooms, two equal facilities, and, yeah.
That's, that's what generated this. That's why, you know, Scott originally pushed for it is, our female firefighter's been awesome about, about this. She hasn't made any, any complaints or anything, but it's just not right.
She shouldn't have to sell.
Right.
So, I think it's our number one building priority, so I think, my number one building priority, too.
And we're hoping that we get a good analysis from it, we get, then a plan to move forward at least, you know?
Perfect. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sir, any other questions for Todd?
Seems straightforward. Very good.
Great. Thanks for your time, Todd.
Like I say, once I talk with Scott, we may have to adjust his overtime depending on what he did, so.
Oh, yeah, with that.
So we'll bring that back at a.
Future meeting?
You bet.
Police.
All right.
Easy, easy.
Yeah. I need to bring my computer, hope for everything that's on here. Scott?
Y'all have a good night?
Thanks, Hunter. Do you want one, Herb? I've got it right in front of me. I just pulled you this up. I kind of prefer working this way, because then I can go back and forth and look at everything. I just, yeah, nice unit view.
Well, if you, if you need to see it, I can show you what I'm talking about once I get started here. Getting started, going down through, of course, wages and all those things are set by contract, so I don't really have any control over that. The first line, just to back up, pretty much the budget that we're presenting is, many of the line items are unchanged from last year. I'll highlight the ones where there are significant changes, because we're asking for more items or things of that nature, if that's okay with you guys. The first one being, we'll get into overtime here, so we can get into the nitty gritty here. Just to start off, the, the regular overtime, operational overtime budget is hundred and fifty thousand. Hasn't changed from last year's budget or the year before that. What we did this year was, we made the addition of the special operations overtime, which we were granted last year, which was ten thousand dollars. That is, I added, that is a line item in the budget. And then I also added a line item for special events overtime, for things like Fourth of July, you know, all the various downtown on tap events and the parades and things of that nature. We ran the numbers. I initially asked for twenty thousand in that budget. We're gonna drop that. I'm gonna make a request that we can lower that significantly from twenty grand to about six grand.
Which one was that?
That is special events overtime. Like I said, I asked for twenty. We did the numbers, and it's looking, we still got a couple of things going on. We've got the cross-country thing this weekend. It's gonna cost us, what, about six hundred bucks for the two officers? So we still got stuff coming up, but what it's looks and looking like by the end of the year, we'll be in about that six, seven thousand dollar range for special events. Fourth of July cost us two grand right at the top, so. So again, I'll make the request that we drop to twenty-two, six or seven thousand, whatever you think is fair.
Fair, the kind of cost of a liar.
Okay. And then with the special operations overtime, we did the math on it last year when you granted us the money. We decided that we could run between five and seven operations, depending on the number of officers we staffed. This year, we ran, I'll give you, give you some results for that. We ran seven operations on seventeen July, twenty-three July, nine October, eleven October, and twenty-four, we did five, twenty-four October. We staffed it with officers from our department. We also brought in officers from other departments who wanted to come and help, like county and the state patrol and things like that, making it bigger operations. That's why you see the gap in, in when we could, because it wasn't only our, our schedules, but it was other schedules, too, that we could get other dogs in here and things of that nature. I mean, if you guys wanna hear the numbers.
Yeah, definitely.
We, during these operations, we addressed problem properties with additional resources the police department had. The following results. We did three residential drug-related search ones. Office located meth, crack, cocaine, marijuana. We had child arrests for some suspects, including some from federal charges, which we rolled these cases into bigger cases, which can't really talk about, but they're becoming bigger things. Of these operates, fifty-three traffic citations for various things. Twelve criminal drug arrests, twenty-one paraphernalia citations, seventeen warrant arrests. Seized six grams of meth, a hundred grams of cannabis, over two grams of cocaine. We seized heroin, oxycodone and methadone pills. Seven illegal firearms were taken off the street from one of these operations. In addition to the firearms, we, related case, we were able to sell a bunch of residential burglaries, not only here in town, but out in the county as well, which working with the county guys. Anecdotal evidence on this thing is that we, we intercept chatter between these guys all the time. And they've begun talking about how they don't wanna come into Rapids with the dope they're gonna make the delivery and pull over. So they don't want, even wanna come into town because they're afraid they're gonna get pulled over. So we're, having the high visibility stuff is, is helping, it's a deterrent, so that's where we're at with that. So, you know, we made good use of the money, the ten grand, and we're happy to have it, so that's why I'm asking for it again. And we'd be, like I said, we'd be happy to have it to make, make use of it.
So Jake and I, I think at the last meeting, felt that ten grand wasn't enough, being especially as successful as you just stated. And being that the special events overtime has dropped by thirteen thousand, I'd like to see that rolled over into that special operations overtime and allocate that money in the budget for that to be twenty-three thousand. So it's just reallocating that, those funds. We're not increasing the budget at all, so. Just a reallocation into that.
I think the special operations has been successful, and one that chief complains is the number of drugs and drug-related crimes in the community. So I'd like to see that keep going forward, too.
It is a wash, though.
Keep rolling. I'm going past overtime then. We've got, again, the night differential holiday pay. Those are all things that are set. The next large, the next biggest in office supplies is the same. Forms of printings is the same. Postage copying is the same, machine rental, photography. Computer supplies went up a bit for, we needed a, a new printer to, let me read my. We need a new printer to replace a malfunctioning printer using conjunction with the LiveScan printing device, the fingerprinting machine that we have. So we budgeted for a new computer for that. We also, I'll see.
Do you already, so do you already have tablets, or is that part of that to include, purchasing tablets for investigation?
Oh, we also need to buy, they've made the request, the detectives don't have the same access as the patrol guys for the computer in the car to run things.
Oh.
They asked for a secure tablet that they could do that with. So I thought that was a good idea to give the detectives a tablet that is essentially is a mobile display terminal like we have in the cars. It's just, you know, for the detectives to use. So that was, that is also in there.
Okay.
Small tools and equipment stayed the same, police range and supplies, this one we made some, um, the request went out and a lot of the, uh. The requests went out to the range officers and the officers for things that, that, you know, we've been, haven't been buying for the last few years. Came in. Request number one is that they, we bought, they wanna buy these, uh. Bags for, for the active shooter situations, where we plan to equip eighteen bags in the squad cars for, uh, to grab and go bag is what we call it. Where you pull up on the scene of one of these things and it's got extra magazines, uh, various things like wedges, all the stuff that you would need if you went into a building and, and in a bag to carry with you. So we, we budgeted for that at a cost of forty-eight hundred dollars and some change. Next one was three patrol rifles for new rifles, we were, up to this point, with these three rifles, then we'll have all brand-new rifles throughout the fleet. Uh, as everybody knows that, you know, the AR fifteen is a high-velocity round, there's only a certain finite number of rounds you can fire at these before you affect the accuracy and burn out the barrels, basically. Uh, so these rifles are, will be the three newest rifles and then we'll have a good, uh, new rifles for the entire fleet, so the request went in, rather than. We're gonna replace, another request that we're making for twenty-two hundred dollars is to replace all the pistol magazines for all of our, uh, active officers. Uh, of course, the pistol magazine springs, they get compressed over time, they're always loaded, it takes the tension out of the spring, so. As the magazines get older, you experience malfunction in your pistol as you, as you, you don't, of course, want that in an officer on the street. So we intend to replace the magazines for everybody. So brand-new magazines to eliminate that problem. Uh, the old magazines we'll use for training and things of that nature, paint and morgue or something, so they're not mixed up with other ones. See, uh, the next line is the yearly supply for cost of range and equipment, which is not limited to, we pay for the, the propane and the electricity and things at the range house with this money. Things like batteries, safety glasses, earplugs, et cetera, all the various little things that goes in the running of the police range.
So do we, is it multiple agencies are arranged now?
They do, but they, when, uh, we have agreements with those agencies in writing, uh, with the Wood County Sheriff's Department and, uh.
Grand Rapids.
Grand Rapids. And here and there, other agencies come use it if they sign an agreement, but they provide their own targets, their own ammunition, their own range officer, it doesn't cost us anything. And also in addition, the, the agreement we have is that they provide something that betters the range every year. Whether it be some kind of maintenance or buy a piece of equipment, et cetera. So. Uh, and then, uh, training and duty ammo is another, is, is, is buy the ammunition for us to train and, and replace our ammunition. We replace our duty ammunition, you know, once a year or so, just so you're carrying fresh rounds in your gum, because they get wet, they get oiled, they get, and you want those to function. Uh, so we're asking for, you know, to buy the forty-five and the two-two-three rounds and that we use on a yearly basis. When there are no questions, I'll move on to the next line. Telephone stayed the same, internet the same, dues and subscriptions went up three hundred dollars, just for, uh. Guys joining various K-nine organizations, uh, uh, police chiefs of police organizations, things of that nature, so. Training and education's the next one that went up. Uh, the reason for that being that we, uh, one is we wanna replace the red man suit for, for Rodney, so. Uh, it's the suit he wears when the people do the, for that and, um, it's getting worn out and things and we don't want him to get hurt. So it's twenty-two hundred dollars for a red man suit. Um, also, uh, then we're adding, training and education includes all the schools and things the guys go to for the year. Uh, of course, we're, uh, we're required to have a certain number of, of in-service training hours per year per officer. And with some new supervisors, we have to send them to some more expensive schools. Uh, we've got a, a new sergeant, a couple of new sergeants, we've got a new lieutenant that we need to get to the management schools. Uh, and that's the reason for the increase in the training budget this year. Most of the classes that we, that we go to cost between three and six hundred bucks. But we've got executive development for four officers at fifteen hundred dollars per student, so.
Do you feel, I, I guess I believe in training and so do you feel training, you know, people are getting the kind of adequate training that they're looking for or?
That.
Are we calling short?
We're, we're getting the training, we're looking for and we frequently, because we have such well-trained people, we can also supplement that by training in-house. Uh, we send these guys to the train-to-trainer courses and then they come back and they share their knowledge. Uh, that includes the range officers, but we have guys that, uh, you know, we sent Officer Berger to the drug recognition expert. Now he can, he can teach the other guys what to look for in these traffic stops and things like that. So it's worth the money to send these guys to some of the more expensive schools. But yeah, I feel we're, we're, as far as operationally having guys here at the department working in Rhode Island and school, I think we, we have a line that we can balance. It's like, I'm about to send guys more training, but I still have to stab the road too.
Absolutely, okay, just wanna make sure I don't fall short.
Um, let's see.
Are there, is there a training that can be, uh, programs that you can, like DVDs that the?
Yes.
Officers can watch?
They're, well, actually through our Lexipol program, they have, uh, training updates that you, the officers can watch on the computer. Uh, it's part of the subscription we pay for, for Lexipol, is that they provide, uh, training and those things. So it's like law updates and things of that nature, uh, case law changes, you know, because, you know, a, a case out in California we may never hear about would actually affect us at some point. So we, we hear about those things.
Yeah, I think creating a library, so that if you get new officers, they can look at this rather than necessarily going someplace.
Yeah, I think part of the FTO program, we have the guys watch.
Yeah, the training officer program, we actually have a, a really nice training program now, compared to when I started.
Here's your gun.
There's your keys.
So, Crime Stoppers is the same, um, time system went up, but that was, uh, they actually, they sent us what the outage would be. That's not, we have, we have no control over that. Patrol squads, um. This is for the maintenance, correct?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, this is the maintenance for all the fuel, oil, repairs, tires, you name it.
Do we have a good rotation on squad replacements?
We do, um, we're, I can get into that later, but we are. We replace either two or three every other year.
Okay.
So.
I think we budgeted for two and a half.
Two and a half, basically, yeah. Yeah. Pretty much similar then. So unmarked squads is the same, uh, it's, again, it's for the, for the detective cars and et cetera. Clothing allowances remain the same, uniforms has gone up. We, uh, we got hammered in uniforms this year just because we've hired new guys and we have to outfit them and. The guy retired may have had a thirty-six inch waist and the guy we just hired is a twenty-eight inch waist, so, you know. Like, here, have some hand-me-downs, we're like, yeah, it's not gonna work.
Here's your belt.
It kinda, kinda goes as you were on the job for all those years, it kinda goes like this, you know, so if you're brand-new at twenty-one, you're, so.
But they pass the physical.
So laundry and dry cleaning stays the same, that's, uh, I think that's a contractual thing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Lexipol is going up, but that's a rate that Lexipol quarter does. Safety is the same, physicals are the same, or went up a couple hundred dollars. Community policing went up, uh, just a, oh, it went up two hundred bucks, three hundred bucks. For, uh, and community policing is one of the ones that we, you know, we buy the cost related for bike patrol, so there's police academy, which is getting kind of expensive. Uh, student police academy and all the, you know, the things that go with, uh, Herman and Dobbins, uh, outreach programs. The department is doing very well as far as getting out there in the city and, and tomorrow night's an example, we're doing, you know, the trunk or treat tomorrow night, uh, all the various things that we do. But investigations went up four hundred, let me see my.
For instance, an evidence bag sealer.
Yes, an evidence bag sealer, which went bad, it, it's, it's almost like you're seal a meal at home, it, it seals the evidence bags. So that thing's malfunctioning, so we need to buy another one of those. Special events has gone up, uh, five hundred and that is equipment and supplies that we buy for, uh, uh, events in the city, whether it's Fourth of July. Uh, planned or unplanned emergencies, things of that nature, so. And let's see, the next big one will be the SRT team. This year, we're asking for, uh, the special response team has, the first line is just the, the equipment for special response team. Um, and it's their ammunition specialized gear that they, they need to buy or replace due to wear and tear. Uh, the second line is we need to buy an updated, the line says updated NDC standard optic, uh, for one of our rifles. What it is, is that we sent some officers to a, to a marksman's school sniper's scope and the, uh, the scope that they brought with was, the instructor wouldn't even let them use that scope. They're like, you can't even use this piece of equipment in a school. So they actually used a borrowed rifle, so I'm like, okay, we're gonna fix that, we're gonna, uh, so we, we got a quote and we're gonna buy an updated, uh, optic that is suitable for police marksmen. And, uh, mounted on one of the rifles, so. Then the next line is, we also, we have, unfortunately, we have, just like the regular body armor that the officers wear, the large clamshell armor that the SWAT guys wear. Uh, it's a little more expensive, but it's also on a replacement cycle because it's Kevlar and it has, uh, it has an end date, basically. Uh, we have several vests, uh, that we need to replace and, uh, we decided to wait and, and budget for it rather than then coming and asking for the money in the middle of the year. We, uh, these, these vests come, of course, they're, they're, they come with the rifle plates, et cetera, that, you know, protect the officers in these high-risk things, so we need to replace several sets. They're, uh, they're, they're not cheap armor. Unfortunately, we have, we have the, the, uh, the federal grant that pays us fifty percent for the body armor that we buy, doesn't apply to tactical armor, that's why. Uh, this is such a big-ticket item right now. This is a, you know, it's, you know, five years from now, we'll be asking for this again, but it's, this is a one-time, five-year purchase of the rotation. And the, the last line is, um, not only are we updating some of the SWAT team's equipment, we have also sent several officers to training and we're. Uh, revamping how our SWAT team operates, so I sent some officers to Hudson Negotiator School. They have been working not only with our guys, but, uh, they're forming a team with county and with Marshfield to, uh, in cooperation, so our, our negotiators just need some equipment. Some of the things that they came up, but they asked for were new headsets, uh, whiteboards and some equipment, uh, just for, just for them to be able to do their jobs. So, uh, they currently have no equipment, so we're really starting them off from, from scratch here. And, uh, that's one thing that I wanted in conjunction with the SWAT team here in town was to ask for negotiators. Uh, we didn't have them, now we do, so.
It's been a long time.
And then down the line, we'll talk about, uh, this, you know, some negotiations we've had with county and things about, et cetera, so. Probably auto-insurance, that's the same K-nine program went up a thousand. In anticipation of us getting a second dog, I just updated what we were getting for my dog. Uh, and this is, um, fortunately for the, the, this is just for the incidentals that go with running a K-nine program for everyday, you know, things of the kind like me. And a lot of the things for the program, which we're lucky, a lot of the food gets donated, vet bills, et cetera, so people love dogs. I think the next one we're going into will be the, um, I think this is, uh, crossing guards, correct? Fifty-five, one-twenty-six? Or fifty-two, one-oh-two?
Fifty-two, one-oh-two.
One-oh-three.
One-oh-three is crossing guard.
Crossing.
One-oh-two, I think, is your.
Yes.
Grant account.
I was looking at the breakdown here, so we're going into crossing guards now, so salary and wages again is set, workman's comp set, FICA. Telephone is, we, uh. Yeah, this is, uh, for the walking school bus coordinator, she gets a. Yeah, she gets a cellphone. So I, every time I see that, I have to look that up and see why we're paying for a phone, but then I see that. Training and education, of course, we need to train our, our crossing guards, they, we've got several new ones. We, uh, good note is that, um, the, the high school, we negotiated with the school superintendent who's paying for a couple of crossing guards at the high school, so. Does, you know, more and more, we get. Uh, uniforms, we had to pay for uniforms for the crossing guard, safety shoes, they get safety shoes apparently and. And crossing guard safety shoes, so. Training, uniform, safety shoes, materials, uh, they get, uh, stop sign and the vests and things that they need. That's crossing guards. Next one will be the, um, the, uh, siren, emergency sirens. So it'll be fifty-two, six-oh-four. So siren maintenance, uh, that one went up because, uh, we need, we need to have, four of the sirens need to have some maintenance and have their batteries replaced. And it's cost, the batteries are a hundred and sixty dollars a piece plus a five hundred dollar installation fee and each siren has four batteries. So, uh, that's where that is coming from is then, well, we've been trying to hit these sirens a little bit at a time and, and I believe these would be the last four that need to be, uh, maintenance. And then we have another line for the annual warning site maintenance, the warn, siren maintenance, just in case something happens and we need to have an emergency repair or something on one of these sirens. And that's, that's a thousand dollars.
Uh, you're gonna need two new vehicles, they come with sirens, okay?
I'm talking about the tornado sirens. Uh, yeah, it, it, that's a whole different.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'm sorry, I thought it wasn't clear. Yeah, we're going into auxiliary now, um. Training and educate, auxiliary police unit, we're, that's, it hasn't changed, they, uh, it's five thousand. And that pays for equipment, it pays for, uh, the various things that auxiliary gets, uh, uniforms, radios, equipment. It sometimes pays for, uh, uh, food and things when they're out there on these long details, so we'll go and buy them some stuff, so.
Yeah, that's very minimal for all we get for that.
It, it is, but the, the auxiliary has been an excellent program through.
That's great.
Um. Oh, I'm just looking. And then we're, we can go into the outlet then. We have several things that we're asking, we're getting, replacing. List of things that are in a yearly cycle is, the first line is the five thousand, we're replacing, uh, we replace ballistic vests every five years in a rotation. Um, for twenty-twenty, whereas we're gonna be buying six S of ballistic armor for officers due for replacement. So I think that number's still correct.
Yeah.
You know, we got a bunch of new guns, we still have six people that need to, uh, the next line down is seventy-six hundred dollars. And that is replacing equipment, again, in yearly cycles, portable radios, we were just talking about that. We have a, a rotation for our op, for our radios and twenty-twenty, we need to replace two radios. And these radios are, are not cheap, so, uh, especially, we were even talking about, you know, ordering some of that, we needed some, uh. Encrypted radios, which are even more expensive and it's, the trend is going now, we're gonna have to start adding some encrypted channels to some of these radios for SWAT. For detectives and things like that, so.
Is that the old, Brian, the old code?
Yeah, remember that? Talk with a scratchy voice.
Yeah. Uh, we're asking for, uh, again, we're asking for two more ballistic shields for active shooter response. A lot of the things that I've been asking for in the budget are all kind of geared towards active shooter, uh, we wanna be as prepared as possible. So each, my goal is for all the squad cars that are out on the road to be equipped with a ballistic shield, a go-bag, a rifle, all the things. a go-bag, a rifle, all the things that they need to grab and go and deal with an active shooter. Uh, so, uh, two more shields we wanna buy, uh, and those will be from Pro-Tech. Uh, they're, they're good shields. They're, they're not the big heavy SWAT shields. They're like a more compact, uh, active shooter response shield and these things are, uh, they're coming down in price too. Uh, then we're asking, uh, we're asking for five hundred dollars for door for wedges, which are, it's a particular kind of wedge that we wanna have each, uh, squad have in their go-bag that is, I call it a six-way. It's, um, very, it's a wedge that you can use various ways to keep doors either open or closed in a situation, so. And then we're asking for police ID panels for our heavy vests that are in the squads because right now it doesn't say police and they really need to say police, so. So that's outlay and then we've got vehicles. And we are. This year, we are, squads are estimated at three and a half, at two and a half a year, right? Two more units replaced a year. So this year, we are, the squad state bid is just under thirty-two grand per squad. We opted for, uh, again, getting the all-gas option rather than the hybrid because the hybrid is even more expensive. So, and of course, I don't wanna be that guy who goes and buys the hybrid the first year without. And so I'll, we'll let the LA's and the New Yorks of the world figure out the bucks and then we'll, we'll, we'll benefit from that.
New York, New York, we're all left your budget either.
So. So that's for squads for this year and squad, we're. Eleven thousand, four hundred dollars is for squad equipment, which is the purchase and cost of installation of squad equipment for a new squad turnover. Three squads, thirty-eight hundred bucks a piece. The new squads, unfortunately, this, we have the budget for brackets and things like that because Ford was kind of not the change of dimensions of the squads for the new budgets for the new year. So all the stuff that we bought that fits in the cars going back a few years, now you've got a gap that you have to buy a special bracket to replace and that's just a racket, I believe, but. They, uh, so we have to buy special things to make sure that our stuff fits. And then you have to buy the wiring harnesses and things that you can't really take back and forth, so that's where this comes in.
Do you have the service that comes in and changes them?
Yeah, we use, uh, we use the guy, uh, what's his?
A Flover, low voltage.
Low voltage, yeah, Flover.
Good.
I think we're almost done. Actually, I think we might do that.
So I know last year was a big deal, was, or not a big deal, but an item of interest was body cameras. So how's that all?
Yes, um, body cameras, we just had, Axon was out and we're getting, uh, the administrator, the administrator of the, the program is trained up. The cameras are in their docks and they're getting, they're getting charged and we are going to be fielding them in about a week and a half. So the program, well, the reason we are waiting is that we, you know, we need to get Axon out here because part of the cost of the program was to get them to come onsite and train our officers. And we actually, each guy on the department's gonna be carrying a camera went through, uh, even Brian and I did as well, where you go through and you learn the ins and outs of these cameras and how they operate and things and walk through and how you link them up to your phone and, and things. And the guys got a lot out of it. I did too. I was like, these do even more than I remember, so. There's a lot of training involved and a lot of going over, uh, the policies and procedures and what's expected of the cameras, et cetera. And, uh, now we're ready. They're gonna be fielding and we're gonna be, we're gonna be going live in just a little bit of time here. So, uh, we're very, again, we're very happy to have them, especially once they've gone over what these things are capable of doing and it's gonna be. But just the fact that we don't have to burn these discs for the DA's office anymore is incredible, so.
I made a request, the referral with regard to overtime for eight events.
Mm-hmm.
Have you been working on that?
I have been working on that, yes, and, uh, we'll have, depending on when you want, if you wanna talk about it at the meeting, I'll have a, uh, you know, some.
Oh, whenever. I said by January.
Yeah, you did say by January, so I've been working on it and I've had, uh, Sue in my office working on it. I'm not sure with the clerk, but we, we're ready to. That's why, actually, as a result of your request, is why I dropped my request for special overtime. Because we ran the numbers and we found out what we're.
I just think those people that, um, benefit from it should pay part of it rather than the citizen who doesn't.
I agree with you. So, yeah, so I think that if, if, whoever the, the committees and councils decide if the, uh, if some of these special event things have to pay some sort of fee, that would offset some of the overtime costs for everybody, not, not just the police department, so.
And pays for the incidental things that you have to buy too.
So we haven't gone, so other, have they gone down that path, other communities or are we reinventing the wheel here on charging?
I'm not sure about other communities. I really haven't looked into good.
There's gotta be something.
Find out what the, what the Flovers and Steven Points of the world do and see if they charge. I'm not, do you know anything about other?
Well, I think it depends. Most downtown associations take the stance of promoting these types of events, so they don't.
They don't wanna pay a fee.
There's no punitive penalty and I think that's my personal concern is, you know, not that we need to find the balance of security, you know, just a matter of, to Scott's point, who pays? And I, I, I support, you know, kind of a shared approach where there probably would be a fee involved. You know, but I also think that some of these events, they should be perhaps hiring their own security and.
Which should be by late.
You know, not having the department. I mean, it's got a lot of other, you know, expensive security guard as far as I'm concerned and you've got other needs on Friday and Saturday nights or whenever these special events are happening, so. I'm hopeful that that'll, if there's a fee involved, maybe it'll encourage them to, to, uh, use their own resources.
I wasn't looking at, is it, to basically, I want to share, that's all. That's my thought.
Yeah.
Cause as, if they continue and there's more and more, um, it's just gonna be more of a problem on our budget.
I interpreted that we were almost going to require it, so if that's.
We're really just looking for a solution.
Putting a plan maybe together, like, here's where they, you know, bringing habits, events.
Come up for an agreement because by, for example, like we are the Wisconsin, uh, Association that's doing the cross-country, I mean, they, we emphasize overtime. So we have no problem at all. Here's two officers, you know, thanks for, you know, coming to town and bringing all these people with you to spend money, you know, so.
Yeah, we wanna definitely keep encouraging events like that.
I, yeah, I think I'm done. If you guys have any questions.
Covered well.
Couple pages of questions here.
This dollar eighty and this one, what is this? See a charge on May twentieth for fifteen dollars.
It's just gonna be quiz. How many magazines have we purchased?
I think I have one question for you.
Okay.
Okay. Don't hear any forty-five caliber ammunition. Give forty-five caliber, one thousand times two and it's the same number. Do you see it?
I see five fifty-seven per one thousand. Oh, yeah, that's a math error. So that should be twice that. Do you see it, Tim? So it's two cases. Actually, actually, this Jordan's math there.
Twenty-two hundred?
It's under two range, so.
Range of supplies.
I just wanna see that math there. Five twenty-two hundred. Oh, yeah, it comes out to twelve. Good eyes, Steve. It'd be a thousand and fourteen instead of the five fifty-sevens. Same end up short yourself. So we may have to make an adjustment on that. I'll have to run these numbers again. Sorry, the budgets are locked. There it is. All right.
Five fifty-seven, what is it? It's, I don't have a public change that that needs to be changed.
Yeah, you just get it updated. Can I work the magic? Yeah, you're right. It just, that did, it slipped up on, so that needs to be, said it five fifty-seven, the number needs to be eleven fourteen oh two.
Okay.
Other than that, do you have any questions? So if you could, push it. Here, you have anything?
No, I'm just here to listen if you want me to hear future moves or certainly let me know if you have questions or, uh, we talked about moving to carbon ads as well.
It's actually in the total though.
Is it?
It's in the total.
I added up, I gave it to you.
Yeah.
Figured out the right number.
Fifty-seven, it's, it's, the total's right, it's just the details. You're supposed to cash my typos, you're.
Fine, you're looking so thorough.
Looks like a letter for the file.
I guess I do have a question. What was the process? Would we settle the public hearing left at the end of the meeting the last time when we were talking about setting the date for the public?
Yeah.
Did we settle?
Oh, to me, it's regularly scheduled.
Regularly scheduled.
Yeah.
And then as far as, uh, this for, uh, I haven't told you this yet, but what I decided to do is, uh, since we don't have enough time for probably a separate meeting with Joe from Public Works, we just, uh, had that put on the back of, uh, our, it's the last item on our regular property and finance agenda.
Okay.
So that way Public Works will be here at the same time, so if.
Oh, it's a good idea.
They have questions on the Public Works committee aspect, they, Joe can probably tackle, hold that one time.
I was gonna ask if you wanted to add a budget item onto an agenda. Already done?
Um, I'd like to have CBB here. I don't know, at a meeting, uh, just because we seemed to have a lot of questions at the last meeting and Jake, Jake didn't really understand what they did and. They can come in and talk about, you know, their allocation and those kind of things.
They're setting up, uh, and the president of the group is setting up.
Okay, that's, I know, so they gotta let her in.
Meredith, and she's, they're planning on presenting something.
I know.
Give her a call then.
Yeah, I know. She's called me, reached out to me and she wants to sit down and just kinda go over it and stuff, so it'd be, that'll be a good idea maybe for a future finance agenda to. Cause I think technically we should have like some type of contract with them that lays out what the funding is and if there's any specific types of.
And they're, they're trying to be, from your question, they wanna be more proactive and do it every year. You know, I don't think we've done in the past, so, um, they're going to present it and, so they're working on it and just give them a call as to when you wanna schedule it.
If there's other questions for Todd or Brian, I'll, make a motion to adjourn.
Are we gonna have another budget? Where, I guess my question is, are, is Joe the last and we're done or?
Well, let's see here. Well, we have the twelfth. Could be, you know, that'd be that week before the, if we wanted to do any other review or questions.
Yeah, I'd like to look at IT. I'd like to, like I said, look, talk to CBB. Joe's the other big one, so.
Well, if we handle DPW on the fifth, then we'll also have Water Light on the fifth. We saw that on the agenda, so. And then. There's that week of the eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth that we could have a meeting. Do we have any other questions?
If we want to try for one of the twelve at four forty-five, I'll send, uh, Joe for, uh, email on that.
Okay.
But yeah, I think, you know, have CBB. That might be a good meeting to have them at then, the twelfth.
Sure.
Okay, number four, CBB.
If you're good with that.
What other budgets?
Just, uh.
IT.
IT?
Yeah. There's always expenses there. And the mayor brought up potential another software and.
Okay. CBB, IT.
I know, um, Tyler actually, um, remarked after the last meeting about putting together a replacement schedule that, uh, you know, actually outline's kind of supporting detail, not just the funding allocations. I know, actually, it was related to the conversation we had about, um, replacement accounts and what funding, fund balances were carried in those. So I think he was gonna prepare something at least to set up, so it gets presented at that meeting.
Yeah. He's working on it, we got a discussion, so. Tyler mentioned we're gonna start putting those other cameras in anytime now.
Yeah.
It's getting started, so. CBB, IT. Do you think of anything else, something else like?
Yeah, I think those are the last, I think.
You're not doing another software in yours?
No.
Add a module on or something.
We haven't even.
Not yet.
This one yet.
I'm gonna get this one answered.
Yeah, there's possibly down the road. Our E side, not, so, technicalists that have a lot of different modules.
You can do add-ons if you want.
Well, any, any further discussion of budgets?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make motion.
I'll second it.
Oh, you, I, I get it.
All right, uh, motion second, all favor, aye.
All ayes.
Ayes have it, we're adjourned at, uh, five fifty-four.
I thought you were asking for a motion.